Melissa coming?
No, she's, she sent me a text a while ago that said she's still at Lancaster. She's not gonna make it.
Oh.
It's almost seven o'clock.
Almost. My best cutting hair.
As I was doing.
My back off.
What would this be, second cutting, third cutting?
I don't know, but my doctor is scoring.
Big.
He was in the, in the field, doctor.
He wants to be doing it today rather than tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow's gonna be awful.
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to call the meeting for the Honeybrook Township Planning Commission, July 24th, 2025 to order. We have a few announcements. We do have four assisted listening devices. For anyone who's hard of hearing, you need a device, just come forward. In accordance with Resolution 2 dash 2012, you are informed that Scott Stilson, Vincent Drive is recording tonight's meeting and we're posting on YouTube. This meeting is also available and being recorded electronically on Microsoft Teams. The final announcement is, in accordance with Resolution 20 dash 2023, the rules of conduct for public meetings and public comment period shall be observed and are listed at the bottom of the agenda. First action item is to approve the minutes from our June meeting. If there are no corrections.
It's just public comment.
Oh, it's public comment period.
Yeah.
I didn't do that on purpose, I really didn't.
It's top there at the bottom.
She's easy. Public comments, anyone on this side of any public comments? I'm seeing any, anybody on this side of public comments? Okay, so see if I skipped it. See how it works at the end. Now we can take action to approve the minutes of the June 26th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions on the minutes, any corrections, comments? All in favor of approving the minutes from June 26th, 2025, say aye. Aye, any opposed? We'll move on to our subdivision and land development applications. There was, there is one, but it is being tabled.
They're going to revise their plans based upon the review letter and we submit, and you guys will see it at a future meeting. I had Christie leave it in the packet so that you guys could see the plan and the review letter. You'd seen that a couple months back, they had a conditional use hearing to have that plan mixed use development.
It was a long review letter.
Yes, I was happy when they said they were pulling off because we weren't gonna get anywhere, and there wasn't too much that needed your input. You know, sometimes if it needs your input on things, then it's productive for them to come, but they decided to pull off.
So then we'll move on to our zoning hearing board or conditional use application section of the agenda. The first item is the Stausus Variance, which is located on 173 Lilly Road. And Jen, if you'd like to.
Sure. This is a dimensional variance there. Replacing an existing barn with a larger barn, it will contain horses. So any barn or building for the raising of livestock and animals needs to be 60 foot from the property line. Their proposed building would be 40 foot, they're making that new building bigger than their old barn, and if you went away from the side lot line, you would end up putting the barn so that it was partially in front of the house. So they requested the variance to have it 40 foot off in route of 60 from the side lot line. So as the variance is its position of support, no position or against.
Is Mr. Stausus here? Do you, do we know who the neighbor is that would, is the closest to that line or is adjacent to that?
I can pull it up. All the neighbors will get notified as part of this zoning hearing. Is it 173 Lilly?
John, is it John Ash?
Yeah.
161.
161, yeah.
Yeah, that's Ash.
I guess if.
Yeah, and it looks like there's woods, like if you see the aerial there, here's the existing barn, so he's gonna go about 20 feet closer to this lot line. This is all woods, it looks like the developed portion of this barn is on the opposite side. So.
We've done this in past, and other cases where horse barns have been a little closer than the 60 feet.
Right, and for reference, if you have a carriage barn, which we see sometimes, you know, when they have like the two acre lots, and they just have a barn for their carriage and can be up to four horses, I think there's only need to be 20 foot from the property lines, you know, but where it's a true, you know, barn related to like agriculture operation, there's potential for additional horses on there. It is 60, so they're at 40. We said all the neighbors do get the notified of the hearing, and they have their opportunity to come to the zoning hearing to present their case.
So what's, what's the opinion of the commission?
I mean, I don't have a problem with it if the neighbors don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I would think if Mr. Ash is notified and he doesn't show up, that would, I think you think like he's okay with it.
I don't have an issue with it at all.
Susan, you're okay?
Yeah.
Would someone like to make a motion to, what I'm hearing is, motion to support?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you. Need a second?
A second.
Any further comments? All in favor of supporting the motion and the second to support the request for relief? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, are there any opposed? Okay. The second item is the request for a variance from Kaufman's, and that's a mixed use, it's in the mixed use zoning for accessory structure to fall into the short-term rental. It's located on Suppley Road. Again, Jen, if you want to take us through that.
Yeah, we had seen this one probably more than six months ago. It was one time we had two short-term rentals on the agenda, one in that old schoolhouse on 10. And this one, there was some, I guess misinformation initially that this one's right down the road here at 221 Suppley. It's the little structure on the pond there if you're heading towards 322 on the right-hand side. There was some discussion initially that that was some type of just a shed that was converted. We've learned more history that that was actually a poolhouse at one time. It was built as a residential accessory structure. There are, you know, footings and things like that for that structure. Some of the planning commission's concerns at the time, when he initially came for his variance application, was that it was in the floodplain, so about building, you know, having the structure in the floodplain, and also whether you would be able to get a building permit for the renovation. He did get a floodplain elevation certificate that the structure is higher than the floodplain level there. And in asking questions, that area or structure hasn't been flooded to anybody's knowledge that I had talked to through the years. He did also put in a building permit application for the conversion to the accessory, to a dwelling unit that can be used for short-term rentals, and that permit application is pending issuance if he gets the zoning relief to have that short-term rental use. He's acknowledged the new short-term rental ordinance requirements that were adopted at last month's board meeting. He said he would adhere to those. So his zoning relief request is because this property is a mixed use and not ag, you know, ag I think starts one or two properties down from him, he would still need a variance for the use because the short-term rentals are allowed in ag and RC. And then going by the short-term rental regulations, it's on properties of two acres and in an existing single-family dwelling or designated accessory dwelling unit. So in this case, he's at 1.7 acres, and while it isn't an existing accessory structure, it wasn't previously designated as an accessory dwelling unit, but it is an existing accessory structure. So he's looking for a position on, you know, going back to seek the variances now, now that he knows he can get the building permit approval, and he's out of the floodplain that alleviates, you know, any floodproofing needs and things like that. It's on public sewer, so there's no issues with trying to modify an existing on lots that they're anything like that for it.
John, do you have anything you want to add?
No, not at this point. I guess I think I got the feeling you were on that survey.
Yeah.
Guess we're just waiting to move forward. Where do you see it in there?
So the relief that Mr. Kaufman is requesting is from, as Jen said. Section 27, 502A, to allow the use of short-term rentals in the mixed-use residential district. Relief from section 1065-81 to allow a short-term rental in an accessory structure not previously considered as an accessory dwelling unit, and from section 1065-82 to allow a short-term rental on a lot less than two acres. Property is 1.7 acres.
Are you looking for a motion for that?
Yes, sir. Or you have a motion second and any comments?
Yeah, to take a position on the application.
If I make a motion, we support.
Do you have a motion? Need a second?
I had some questions.
Yeah.
All right, I'll second it, then you can ask your question. How's that? Your motion second, no comments?
Um, what is the square footage of this building?
I don't know if I have it on. How big is that?
Twenty-two by twenty.
Are you allowed to have an ADU in mixed-use residential?
Um, accessory dwelling unit? Let me.
I'm looking at the fact sheet.
Yeah, I don't, I think it would be a variance for an ADU in mixed-use residential.
So the building has a kitchen, bedroom.
It does, yeah.
Family room.
Well, I should say a bedroom, it's all open, it's almost more like a motel room with a kitchen in it. Do you have any partition walls or is it a bathroom?
So kind of like a studio kind of setup.
So the maximum number of people would be two, right?
Yeah, under the short-term, yeah, you would have to comply with everything in the short-term rental thing, so yeah, it would be, I think we assigned two per bedroom.
Per bed, yeah.
Yeah.
Per bed. Did you have any issues with water in any of the last storms?
We did not.
You didn't have any issues there?
No. I mean, it's about two foot above the pond, so the pond actually did melt over a little bit this summer, but the cabin was dry.
And the other, the house that's on the property, is that a rental as well?
Yes.
Is that short-term or is it a long-term? So he needs a variance for an ADU in that.
He need, well, he's asking to use that as a short-term rental.
Yeah, I'm just saying, but in order to do that, it has to be an ADU, and in order to be an ADU, it has to have a variance in that zoning, right?
Right, so the variance, we put the section number, that's the part of the short-term rentals that requires a short-term rental to be in an existing dwelling or an existing ADU. So it's seeking relief from that since it's not an ADU.
So it doesn't have to be an ADU, is what you're saying?
Right, because he's seeking a variance from the requirement that.
So it's not gonna be an ADU?
Right, so it would just be used as a short-term rental.
Oh, so that, that's interesting because that kind of, so if you allow that, then you would have to, that's setting precedent for short-term rentals can be in not ADU structures, correct?
So.
This is pretty.
Yeah, in this case, I mean, it would be, yeah, it's still like in an accessory dwelling. I think part of that concept when we talked about the short-term rentals was that they were in a separate unit and it wasn't part of the house.
Right.
So this is still, it's just in, yeah, an accessory, if it was already an ADU, then he wouldn't have that variance for that provision. But yeah, just to have it in a separate accessory structure that wasn't previously designated as an ADU, so.
Um, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, I just think we just, we all just sat around and did the ordinance. And it's three big parts of it that are, I mean, if you do it, we have to be prepared to do it for everybody then, right?
We would recommend it to, whatever way we go, but it's really up to the zoning here and board to make the decision.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like you just created all these.
President setting or not.
Right, and I think you, well, you base and you can make in your recommendations, and whenever we do these, it's often you cite your reasons why in particular, so that it goes in the meeting minutes. So when we had our short-term rental discussions, the zoning districts you chose were so that they were more rural, independent lots, and not ones that are like typically in a subdivision. So I think that's part of why you went ag and RC versus in MUR and MUC, you have potential for like full developments to be in there. You went up to two acres, I think we went back and forth between acre and a half and two acres, but just to have a bigger lot. And the designated structures was so that it wasn't in part of a house, like you people weren't just renting out of room. So if you were going to support it, take no position, or whatever you're gonna do, I think would be prudent to put in the minutes your justifications that this is not a lot in a neighborhood, you know, while we're not necessarily in a zoning district, we would, if you're in favor, you know, of granting the relief, you know, you're within almost 10% of the lot area, you're not in a neighborhood, cite the reasons why it's okay in MUR in this case, but not another case, like if you're on like Chastain Drive, you know.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, I just think it gets.
Yeah, but I understand the precedent.
The next person that comes in and says, hey, you just let this person.
Right, and that's why it's important to cite your justifications. If you gotta go that way, then you have it to fall back on.
Yeah, I just.
Precedent is always something important.
I think precedent almost is more important sometimes.
Right.
Because you do have to treat the next person the same way.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, like?
Yeah.
It can't be about feelings, like if we.
Yeah.
The next person comes in and says they wanna have it on a lot that's smaller than two acres and.
Yeah.
In a zoning district that's not supposed to be in like.
Yeah.
We have to be ready to say yes to them too. Which pleased me to believe we shouldn't have made all the rules, but we did. That's just my thoughts on.
So are you suggesting that, that we, as Jen's mentioned, that we should add something to this motion to, to try and specify, to alleviate the precedent-setting portion of the decision, if it's possible?
Yeah, absolutely, because it would, I think it would help in future scenarios, might not, you know.
So why don't we talk about what, what, what those items are, and then we'll have to go back and see if you're okay with, with the change, if it makes sense. So, so run, run through some of your suggestions and see if Erin and.
So I think the three big ones that Erin was talking about, one is the zoning district. So in that case, I think you chose your zoning district based upon ones that were more rural and not to avoid them being in a true subdivision. So if that's true, then in this case, it would be basically, it's not in a subdivision, it's in a rural part of the MUR zoning district.
So it's acceptable because even though it's in the MUR, because of the uniqueness of the surrounding and the lot size and, and the.
The non-surround, the surroundings of the property uses, kind of, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I don't think it really has an impact on the neighbors there, essentially.
Okay.
Because you have a park.
Right.
You have the pond.
Yeah.
There is a neighboring.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Was that in prior to MUC? Was that in RC before that?
I think it was in ag before it was in MUR.
So it would have been acceptable when it was in ag or RC, but now it's in MUC, that's what makes it.
I can't say for sure what the prior zoning was. I thought ag went all the way up to the borough line before, but I may have the old zoning map.
Is everybody's microphone on? It's hard to hear everybody, but.
Mine was.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay, now they're on. So that goes to zoning district. The next one was lot size. We specified two acres, this is 1.7, which, because I like math, 1.7 divided by two, it's 85% of the required lot area. Again, I think that came, lot area size was again to avoid the neighborhood thing, to avoid neighbor impacts. That was one of the primary planning commission and board concerns throughout that process was the impact on neighbors with these short-term rentals. So you guys can discuss the lot size.
Is there anything else you?
The, the fact that it's not in an ADU is a little, because ADUs are taxed as another dwelling, correct?
I think so, but I think the building permit that's issued is going to reflect that it's been converted to a dwelling. It's just a dwelling that's gonna be used as a short-term rental.
So.
So I think it would still be taxed the same.
So I didn't, I didn't really hear a, a clear comment to what you, what you're saying.
Well, I think if it's being converted to an ADU, that's different, but I think our idea was we can't have people renting out their sheds for people to live in, or you know what I mean, as rentals. So if it's gonna be converted and get all the building permit, you know, reviews and things like that.
Right, and the building permit is, he did submit that with the drawings, and it has been reviewed to make, that was one of the planning commission's comments, first time it came out, was are you able to convert this to meet the requirements?
Right.
There is a building permit approved pending the zoning approval. So if the zoning approval, he gets those, then they can release that building permit, and it would be reflected that that space was converted basically to a dwelling unit for short-term rental use.
And Jen, you said this was missing information the last time, that it wasn't a shed, it was actually its foundation underneath it?
Foundation underneath, apparently it was used as a poolhouse many years ago, that structure.
So the last.
From what I heard, it's been there for over 30 years. You know, it's not a newly converted one, and it was.
So it had electric and water to it before?
I think so, it had.
And sewer?
Yeah, it had some, I don't know about sewer, what wall was in there, I was just told it was used as a poolhouse going that many years.
Did you run the water and electric and sewer, or was that?
We reviewed it, it was there, but we just ran all new lines and wires. Now, there was not a sewer, but I have that application in the sewage duct right now. I mean, it's hooked up to the existing house, but they wanted to.
So how would that, if this was a short-term rental, depending on where it's, how it's set up, it wouldn't necessarily have to have a separate sewer? I mean, in this case, I think it needs to.
I mean, here, they have public sewer, so I mean, it has, either way, I mean, it has like a kitchen facility in it, so as long as, the way we go under zoning in the building code and the way your ordinance is written, if a house has a full, if there's a full second kitchen, which basically includes an oven and a stove top to have a complete kitchen, then that's another dwelling unit versus just adding bedrooms to the space. So that's how your ordinance defines it, so it would still be considered a second dwelling, and here it'd have to have something from the sewer authority that is their acknowledgement of this short-term rental connection, and whether they haven't paid for an extra EDU, that's up to the sewer authority, and we would just look for their confirmation before we release the building permit.
So that would be a building permit issue?
Yeah. Yeah, the zoning approval and the sewage is conditions before a building permit's issued.
That's all I had.
Turn me to Susan.
So I remake the motion and add to support with the notes as to why we don't want to set precedent?
Okay, so I second your original motion, I'll, I'll second.
Second your second motion.
I'll second your second.
Okay.
All right, if there's nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
All right, so that will be on the Board of Supervisors' agenda. I think it's August 13th for them to take their position, and then it'll go to the zoning hearing board, and they'll let you know when your official zoning hearing board date is. Ready? Yeah.
I guess Christie put the note on that you can go to ECO and see the updated short-term rental ordinance that's now codified. The next item we have in front of us, it's under Other Business, that's Sweetwater's property, this is, they're working for a land development waiver, and somebody here for.
Yeah.
Hoover Building.
Hoover Building, oh, it might be Troy maybe. Hoover Building, it might be Troy maybe. This is over at Kemper Equipment, add an horseshoe pipe near, behind empty Steiner. They're looking to do about a 10,000 square foot addition or if you're facing the building at the back right-hand side. That might speak to the whole thing. It's not anticipating like inside new business moving in. It's more or less to enclose some of their existing outdoor storage area. Everything will be on existing impervious, so they won't need to do stormwater management, but they will do an erosion settlement control plan because the disturbance is over 5,000 square feet. So any new non-residential building or addition to a non-residential building requires land development unless, you know, the board and planning commission would find that the development has minimal impact, that would not warrant a full land development plan. So Mike, if you can add anything else you might want to say.
I don't think there's a whole lot to add. Jen kind of spelled it out. There are no.
No new employee count, same employees. And like Jen said, they'll get to move a lot of that equipment and materials under rather than have it out in their lot. The addition will be constructed entirely on existing impervious surface, so there's very minimal impact to stormwater, if any. So like Jerry said, we request to have a bigger friendly development, submit building permit with the EAS plan and we can figure from there.
Said no additional employees, so no additional parking. There's no customer or additional deliveries or anything like that?
Correct.
And at the building permit stage, will you determine if they get beyond the current impervious area?
Yeah, and that whole area around this backside of the building, like this is all gravel now, so it would have to get substantially bigger to go beyond that. But we look at the lot plan and draw them that'll come in, make sure, you know, the setbacks they have shown there comply now, but when it formally comes in at building permit stage, they also have to do an erosion settlement control plan. So will we do that, make sure at that stage that it does meet the setbacks they haven't gone over, you know, beyond the existing impervious cover, you know, or would generate the need for stormwater, you know.
So when this building was constructed and that stone was placed, that probably wasn't considered impervious, but it was probably before, this is a real building.
Right.
The building's been here for a while, so there probably wasn't any stormwater required at the time. So I understand that you look at, you look at stone areas as impervious. But that stone area wasn't looked at as impervious. Is that'll get picked up at the building permit if there's something stormwater-wise that you think they need?
Yeah, if there's anything they need, you know, the way our ordinance is written, you know, it talks about increases in impervious cover. So, you know, we'll look to make sure that whatever was, whatever's out there basically was placed with the necessary permits and approvals that they haven't been adding on, you know, to that gravel area unknowingly over the years that stormwater should have been, you know, would have been required by ordinance at some point. So we will clarify that.
And the runoff runs off onto their property. So what's your opinion of these folks? The request is just a way to land development portion.
So there's no issues, because it looks like that's like a farm field. There's no issues with runoff now into that?
No, the.
Field. The area there.
Next to it's where the, it was Cambridge scale to become a Calvary Chapel.
Yeah.
And they've been doing their improvements in their parking lot expansion. And I've been out there quite a bit after these storms and there hasn't been any runoff issue from that rear part of Kemper Equipment is, you know, forward. And there was stormwater done up front when Wendy and he started going in. There's a stormwater facility over there. So that front portion does have stormwater management for here.
So if something comes up, you can deal with it at the building, the permit, present?
Yeah, every building permit that comes in goes through an engineer and also just to make sure, again, the erosion settlement control plan and if stormwater's required. So just because you're raving land development, if something was to change, you know, from what they're showing here to building permit stage, it will be evaluated then and if necessary, you know, they can be required to do a standalone stormwater plan and not the full land development. We still reserve the right to require stormwater.
As for the front stuff in the back. Hey, what do you think?
I mean, I'm fine with that. I think it'll look better if some of this stuff was stored inside anyway. It's a lot of stuff out there.
Yeah.
Susan? Okay, Troy? Someone want to make a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
All right. No further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's in support, this recommendation is just support to the supervisor since it's a way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, I think it's the 13th, whatever that second Wednesday is, it'll be on the board agenda.
Okay.
All right?
Yeah, thank you.
Now we'll move to our public comment here at the end of the meeting. Does anyone have a comment? Not seeing any desire to speak? If that's the case, we're ready to adjourn. Someone wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we all okay with, in favor of adjournment? Whoever votes against it. All right, thank you.
Is the requirement of.
So unlimited lifestyle is. Be sure it's ten. And there's, in the zoning ordinance, there's a section for keeping the amount of lots less than ten. And then it's like.
I'm trying to be honest.
Which thing?
Good, how are you?
So I know.
We should do lots of.
Yeah, have a free next week.
I'm on vacation. Can I? I'm meeting.
I know that perhaps I can't. But I think it's like, you can have more horses than you could have on this whole lot, but it's actually.